I'd like to bring the work session into order, please.
I don't know how this usually goes.
Yeah, I don't know how it goes.
It's informal.
Hold on, I need to record.
Okay.
Very informal.
Sorry.
That's all right.
That's really informal.
She can be the boss of town. Very informal. Thank you, Mr. Trebek.
I watch that every night.
I was gonna say, is that?
Jeffrey, he's been coughing a lot more now.
What's the other show?
I love him. I'm gonna watch him every minute I can.
Yeah, I know.
He's an icon.
He's what?
He looks like a queen.
Quite, really?
Aww.
And his farewell speech. I was like, "Dad!"
No, I'm gonna cry.
Okay.
Lot of numbers here.
All right, we're recording.
So, Ms. Cullors had made a request for us to put on the agenda, and I've put on the work session just because I thought it could probably give a little more discussion and background information. And I've asked Mike Berry, our Solid Waste Manager, to provide some additional background on it. Our put works director, I keep calling you Solid Waste Mike, sorry. You're lots of hat. Four hats. You can't get rid of the trash, though. So, Cheryl had a specific concern relative to the testing, I believe, of 233 Tree Farm Lane. And we have done quite a bit of testing in the area, and I figure Mike could give up. And I told him, I said, "I don't want to spend a half an hour, but give a little bit of an overview of what we've done and what we have not done, why we've not done it, and certainly we can take direction from the board there."
And I, did you have a specific question? I know you mentioned when you were riding around.
Yeah, I think I can simplify things by asking. How many tests are done per year, water test?
Per year, so, and, well, I don't know if you want to look at my screen, I can show you on the quarter. Just real quick background, so, you know, we operate under a permit issued in 1975 by Department of Health, and then most recently amended by DEQ 2004. Waste footprint is approximately 38 acres of the boundary. I'm gonna try to stick to just groundwater, so I don't hold you up all day. As you've seen, you had one from the Tree Farm Lane 115, and the sample results were quite enormous. Landfill closed in the early 90s. The best reported date that I've found in our records is April 8, 1994. We're currently under a 30-year post closure care period as required by Virginia Solid Waste Management Regulations. So, we currently have remediation on one for groundwater and landfill gas. This is a Google Earth picture, and I got some maps, and I can hand you out some maps, too. I had this on a previous slide when we were discussing the issues. I guess 2017 and 18, we had to couple meetings with the older board. But MW9, it's monitoring well nine, as you can see in this corner. I don't know if you guys remember when we took our ride down there, there was some new stone. We just put three wells there, and those are delineation wells, two shallow, one deep well. And we're all working against the contamination, whoops, that, you know, the migration we've seen or concerned are these two properties. This is Lockhart, and this was formerly Coosier, now Fletcher.
Right.
So, this is how groundwater, this is how sampling happens, monitoring happens. I'll give you, I think, some information that you want. Around landfill, we currently monitor semi-annually via A compliance and 19 corrective action monitoring wells, as well as three surface water monitoring points. The A compliance wells function as a baseline monitoring network, and this is required by Virginia Solid Waste Management Regulation, and it's used to detect a release of contaminants from the landfill. So, those base points. So, our job is, hey, let's keep this on this site. That's our goal, that's our mission. Annual groundwater monitoring reports are submitted to DEQ. We have to do that within a period of 120 days following completion of the second semi-annual groundwater monitoring report. So, most important thing as we start is, you know, everything we do there is very heavily regulated. DEQ pretty much stands on top of us. All of our information, all of our samples, everything goes to them. Because we had some issues with groundwater, we exceeded GPS. You'll know in a lot of our documents, it says GPS. Usually you'll see groundwater protective standards, certain protection standards out there. We exceeded them on the northeast side of landfill in the early 2000s. So, remember, we closed in 94, early 2000s is where we started to see exceedance has happened. So, due to the close proximity of residential well downhill from the area contamination, if you remember, and I can back up, I think, when we rode, when we came in on our little tour with the new board members, we came in and we rode around the front back to the road, and we saw the little built, and it's hard to see, but we saw the little building.
Right.
We'll talk about it in a minute, and we'll get you in it. So, you know, we're concerned with migration in the natural plants. So, 2004, we started, and the pumping system, we call it our G, Groundwater Extraction and Treatment System. So, it intercepts that contaminated water, and it only goes so far along the front of those homes, but it intercepts it mostly its solvent-related organic contaminants before they can leave the landfill. So, we're trying to get it, pull it back, and then we treat it. It goes through, it's continuously pumped through those five wells to that little building we rode by, and then it's stripped via airstripper, and those volatiles are sent out, and then we discharge back to nearby stream. Now, you know, it goes back in the ground clean. It's basically, we're treating. We have to, every month, we have to report those DEQ, and that sample for compliance. So, every day, our personnel is out there taking readings of everything that's working. That's a daily task that we do ourselves.
So, now, that system, is that coming out of wells, or is that?
That's not coming out of residential wells. Those are wells that we specifically installed where we first saw concern, like towards Lorraine's home.
Does it test, are there French drains that it, like, when it rains and it goes, are there French drains to catch and run through that system and result all this out of wells?
These are extractions, they're pumping back to that building. I don't have anything taken out anywhere else in the well.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple questions.
Yeah.
How deep are the wells that you're pulling from?
I can get you the exact figures. I've got so many wells.
You can, in a minute, I'll be pumping out for your extraction.
I don't, I'm not 100% on that one, Archie.
Okay.
I can tell you, I've had, I've got a whole lot of wells there.
Couple dozen wells.
Yeah.
They're all different.
Yeah, I can tell you the much.
But you can get a total on this stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can give you a report, I can give you the monthly discharge reports and, you know, flows and pH and all kinds of goodies. But each one, I mean, they're at different, they're at different levels. I mean, like, I can tell you, like, the shallow wells, you know, you're probably looking at a 50-foot well, the ones they were drilling, you know, a couple of shallow, one deep, you're trying to delineate a plume.
Because not often, typically, the more that you pump, and the less, the less possibility of advancing.
Right, well, at least pump continuously. Yeah. And I don't know if you recall, but a couple of years ago, we talked about, okay, well, we are, we have Joyce Engineering, and I'll get to some documents from them. Number of years, they've restructured themselves, they're kind of brand new in a way, La Bella. They bought Joyce out, so I'm still dealing with a lot of the same people that have the history with us, but there is some change there in name. But they actually handled, you know, coming out there, taking the samples for us, getting them to the laboratory, making sure they meet those regulatory requirements. Now, you know, they've brought this information to me, and then, of course, you know, a lot of mandates, as I said, to DEQ. So, when we start seeing stuff happen, we don't wait to react, you know. There is proactivity and reactivity, and, you know, anytime you're talking about contaminants, it just, it just brings, you know, this scare out there. And I think, you know, in this situation with the Ori's, you know, when we started having discussions, because the most, the most permanent and effective way to eliminate any potential risk is to not have someone use a well that's, has anything, that has been seen there. And I'll get a little further into this. You asked about the samples, the three wells that we've historically monitored where we first saw problems, Mrs. Smelster's home, then would be Joy Coosier out there, Fletcher's home, and then the Lockhart residence. Well, we mentioned early groundwater protective standards. So, the groundwater protective standards, they're with all of us, you know. And there's federal standards, the EPA puts those out, but when you get into a situation where if there's any kind of quantification, it doesn't even have to exceed laboratory or the GPS standards, if there's a quantification, then that, we have the duty and we're regulatory responsible to protect human health, even if it does not exceed groundwater protective standards. So, I don't want anybody to think that nobody doesn't care. Ms. Fuller, actually, and I don't know if, how many of you have met Ms. Fuller, but her family owned some of the adjacent properties, and she was gonna try to attend, but she had a meeting, so she just wanted to see what, and I said, "Well, I'm not exactly sure what we're meeting on." So, we just reviewed it. This is actually her daughter and son-in-law that we're discussing. So, and he is, I think, in Puerto Rico or somewhere.
Yeah, I talked to him, we did Sunday, and he was, Monday, he was in Puerto Rico.
But the other two wells, as we did branch out, we did one of Ms. Fuller's daughters. So, as we started having discussions over what can we do here to be more protective, we're starting to see influx, we're anticipating exceeding our GPS in MW9, the monitoring well on the corner, what can we do? So, I came to the board, and then, you know, we started talking, okay, well, could we potentially purchase those properties and just avoid, you know, all potential future risks? So, started having discussions, and the Lockhart house, and it's still owned by multiple members of the family, the owner at that time has since passed, Mary Ann Lockhart, we're not interested in that. And on the Smelster property, Mrs. Smelster's property, family subdivision, you know, it was originally her daughter, she was renting the home, and she was interested, you know, in that process. So, at the end of the day, we ended up putting an easement, and I'll get there.
Now, you mentioned Sherry Endry to me. Did you test Sherry's house, or were you including her house as a father?
Well, both those homes. I have a map on it.
So, you tested her house.
Yes, yes. Yeah, because that's where the plume's. This is just the letter that's in your package, just to let you see, you got all the laboratory results, I didn't put them all up here. Every person's home that we test, that we're required to or not, they get a letter, it gets sent to the state, and it's always a copy to Laura Stewart or whoever, when we have to do these, our engineers, who we contact, Laura Stewart is typically our contact.
With DEQ.
With DEQ. But this, this was one that we started working in the easement process, and just, you know, and I live in the South River District, I live in that area, and probably related to half of them, just because I've been there my whole life, but I'm actually, Ms. Fuller told me how we related somewhat very down there.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, you know, she was concerned, I spoke to administration, Doug said, "Let's go ahead and test the home." You know, I didn't want to just start testing every home, because what happens, as soon as you have any kind of discussion, everybody gets upset and worked up, and they think, "Oh, no, something's wrong, something's going on, you're doing something funny here." And, you know, I just stood in the hall, you know, I wouldn't be able to go home at night if I couldn't stand there and talk to her in her face and tell her the truth, because I know that's her children. I have daughters myself, you know. So, she, you can go down there and talk to her, I'm always upfront with her, I know administration is, and we want to do the best for her. The statistics, so, I have to balance trying to, you know, be really nice with still doing my job and watching footage at the same time. But protecting human health is number one, so I don't want to, anybody to misconstrue that as we discuss this. Here is, this Lockhart residence, here's the letter, that one was a couple of years ago. DEQ, and I have a slide here, but we didn't have to do these, we still don't have to do these, but this 115 Tree Farm Lane, and then, I believe it's 1687, I don't know, I got it on the screen, it's Sherry's home. They said, "Well, we recommend every two years, so we'll get ready to do those again." So, that is just, hey, we don't think there's anything, and, you know, if the engineers are wrong or something, you know, it'd have to be a major or shift for any of us in our lifetime to see anything there.
Now, Sherry's well, do they share the same well?
Sherry.
And her most.
The hill and across the road?
The hill, up on the hill.
Well, no, and we actually tested that spring as well. That's on spring.
I guess my thought here is going, if you tested Sherry and she's up on the hill further away from contamination than Mr. Ori's house, then...
Well, yeah, and I have a map of the plume. I'll show you as well, because the groundwater, they're looking at plumes, and I'm not a geologist.
No, and I'm not either, and I know they're going on their best, but nobody knows.
Yeah, you know, so you're stepping, you're stepping, you're stepping. So, it's like, okay, well, if we know you have a well at the same level, and I test Mr. May's well, and then I test Archie's well, you know, and I have nothing, I have nothing, you know where you're, you follow the laboratory analysis from those monitoring wells and what we're doing over here.
Yeah, I understand.
So, if I see, hey, this is popping up here and across the street, and part two of this, and I have a picture on down the road, we're talking about probably a 70-foot well that's in the Lockhart residence, that sits right at the road and right across the street is the, is where our landfill property ends. So, we're basically in the same column of water right there, there's no differentiation at all. So, we know whatever's happened here statistically, it's coming, it's coming next door. So, this is one place I can say that, you know, sometimes engineers, I'm scratching my head when we work with them, but they are very helpful in bringing us information. I'm gonna get to the map here, and I've got something I can hand you out. One thing, another thing that is sent out each year, and I think Ms. Fuller mentioned getting this, and she asked me, well, it was sent to me and my husband, and in the past it's been sent to her mom. And I said, "Well, this, and this is a list of the residents, these are adjacent property enters. We're required for permit to send it to adjacent property enters." Now, I tried behind the scenes when I started, like, we still had, through the engineer labeling for Ray, Ray in the rain, which I know Ray's passed on. So, whenever something happens, because I'm close to that area, I try to get them, hey, you know, like, I know I'm just passed, this is the next responsible person. So, it wasn't an attempt to avoid any one, our mandate is the adjacent property enter. I think you got some, let's see, we have Lockhart's, Fletcher's, Fuller's, I think everybody on there, and you probably know everybody in that area. So, this is who it went out to, and we sent out basically a sheet that summarizes everything to all of those surrounding neighbors. And this is something I thought, well, you know, if, if there's a real problem, you know, if you, if you want us, or if you guys want me to sample them just to sample them, I mentioned, I served at your closure, but we could, maybe we could just put them on the list to show them what's happening. This is the community information sheet that goes out to all the adjacent property enters. Now, they're not immediately adjacent, and there's no history and no site of contamination at their location, so we're not mandated to send them this information. So, they're not a list, but I mean, it's public information, it's not a big deal to do so. And they get a map that shows that it's marked and highlights all of the migration, what's happening, what we're working on.
All those little dots around the perimeter.
This is a network, yeah.
Of either wells or gas extraction.
Like Ori's.
And show Bentonville Road and the wells.
Right, well.
Lockhart property.
Okay, so, this is Lorraine Smelster's home here, and, oops, hang on. So, that was probably the first thing that happened, and I think you and, or Steve had mentioned some, you guys talking, when they were talking about a new landfill. Now, you didn't want to know, and Bentonville, Doug was just mentioning that in one of the previous meetings.
That where it was originally along the river.
Right, yeah. So, the landfill regulation said, I believe it's 500 feet off the top of my head, but you can't site a landfill. Now, it doesn't work in reverse, you can put a home, and that was part of our reason, you know, with searching after an easement. But they said, "Hey, we don't want you to come any farther, we're starting to worry about these wells, guys," you know, the people at the time. Well, the board, you know, at that point, I wasn't here, Doug was, but I don't know, yeah. You know, they continued to landfill out to the front, you know, and they continued to go a little far further. You know, if they would've got out a year earlier, it would've been less protective for those people that live there now, because if they would've got out '92, '93, they would've had to do nothing there, it'd have been done, closed, you know, it was over. You don't have to. Like, Captain Mountain landfill, old landfills, you, there was no requirement. Since we went a little longer, we have to have active management. And that's what I told Ms. Fuller and others before, hey, it's a good thing, you know, even though they came a little further, if they would've stopped a year or so sooner, they wouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't have had to do anything ever there. So, we are more protective than we would've been if they would've closed like a year sooner. But this is Mrs. Smelster's home. Ms. Smelster said, "Hey, you know, the regulation says landfill should be this far from the home, we're worried about a well." So, the county, the board at that time said, "Okay, well, we'll drill you a new well." So, she has a well behind her home. We have a very good relationship.
And there's no contamination.
There's no contamination at all, and that treatment system, because that's the initial, hey, we're seeing something happen, is in front of that home and goes towards Lockhart and Coosier. Well, very good relationship with Ms. Smelster. I mean, even prior to easement, she allowed us to use the old well, and instead of us drilling a well.
In front of her home.
In front of her home, right in front of her home, we can go in there and use that as a monitoring point, saved us a lot of money. So, I mean, I think it's a good relationship when people offer to work with you like that, you know, and I feel, I feel like that I have a good relationship with most of the folks. The old Fletcher well, Lockhart wells are both in the front yard down here, this is Bentonville Road, this is the area of some of the new wells, MW9, that's where our concern is, and the plumes are going that way.
Where's her problem?
Which one?
Ori.
I'll show you.
Ori.
I'll show you. All right, so, basically, I have a little thing on what's detected, and I have a couple different maps to show you. So, let's go here. So, here's Tree Farm Lane, here's Bentonville Road, tried to blow this out a little bit. This is 115, and this is gonna be Ori on the next home here.
Okay, but now, show him where Sherry, well, you've got her ass turning.
Sherry, right here, yeah. Now...
So, you test the two in front of it, and Miss Ori resides behind it? Is that the, she's the next one?
Right. Now, this, this shows you a little better map and the reason for that. Let me see, I got a handout for that to give you, too.
Now, Sherry, I was thinking Sherry's house was further on that hill than what we're calling it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, this is, this one is where I'm looking at right now, and it's got the description on the back. I might actually take one of those. And this, this blow-up.
It goes back to Donnie's house, this one. Donnie, Ori, the Ori's. And she is, so the lady who's requesting it is here, the second. What is here is, this is a, this is a hill, and then his area is more flat, it doesn't, you can't see it on the top, the photography's not there.
All right.
So, it's there.
So, it's this first one that is being requested, and we already...
And the star ones are the ones we're all testing.
Well, we have tested, we have tested.
And nothing has been identified in there.
Right, right. And the other part of this is, in the term in the easement I was talking about, I wanted you to understand, and she was mentioning, you know, why that home, because we're looking at, right here is our issue in these homes, but we had some modeling done with the engineers, and you should have a description on this page that explains, and I was gonna leave it up here, but what the major determination was, you know, here's 115 Tree Farm Lane, it switches the home before we get to the Ori's home. This AB point was determined by model analysis using bicarbonate natural attenuation decision support system, which was created by the United States Air Force, so, in their Center for Environmental Excellence in Technology. So, the model simulated the maximum distance of 1-1 dicorethane and tetracorethane, and these are the, this is the constituents that we've consistently seen and had concern with, how far they would travel to the north based on concentration on landfill property from MW9, and then the water wells, 1793 and 1835, those were the two that we're really concerned with. The model was run out to a time of 50 years. Now, the maximum distance either compound was predicted to travel was 100 feet from the landfill or the north boundary. So, this was the plume limit based on the model, and then our engineer, to be conservative because of fractured bedrock geology, he took that out over 200 feet, so he more than doubled that to say, "Okay, well, it's more than double this bottle, in case it's not on the money, we're gonna double it." So, this line, this line is, this is the area that we determine, hey, we don't want any more homes built here, we don't want anything else happening here, no more wells in the ground, because we don't want any other changes happening.
Now, is that your buffer that you were saying?
Yeah.
So, the county purchased the, basically, easement across the front of Smelster.
Did I give you that map?
The one that has the buffer?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's you.
Okay, well, that's, that's how we determined the easement area, the buffer. I got one on the screen, I think. I was just making sure she had that.
Yeah, I handed it.
So, so now you're looking at, you were talking about Sherry's home, you know, looking at it flat, you can see, okay, here's Sherry, and behind this is Tree Farm Lane. So, we're looking at the plume and what that modeling actually showed us, the possibility of something happening. So, like I said, we kind of branched out, and we did this home, and we did this home, and these, both these homes are beyond our plume limits already. We actually did the spring, if, let me, when I did my clicker. That's modeling, that's another map. Here's a picture of the Lockhart house, we went by there, it's a well, it's about, it's about 70 feet. So, we have another little house down here. You know, now, if you're, like, you're talking about looking at the ground, if you're looking at the ground, standing in that corner, you'd naturally think, I mean, if you, if you dumped a dump truck of water on the ground, it's gonna run that way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where your groundwater looks like it can go, but, you know, we've actually tested that spring as well, and had no, no, this spring here, had no concerns at all.
Just for clarification, this is Ori's property, 233, right?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, another lot and house in between what we previously sampled.
Well, and I do not want you to think at all that I think you're intentionally missing anybody's house, help, and I don't.
No, no, no.
You're very efficient, do a wonderful job. Never, you'll never hear me say any different there, but the thing is, I just have a hard time, it's a test, it gives, if it makes him feel better and feeling that he is doing his due diligence to make sure his family, I just, I feel like it's a simple thing to do. And taking into consideration the history of this family as well, eminent domain took his wife's grandfather's farm for this, he fought it hard and worked.
For the landfill?
Yeah, and so, you know, I've got that history to think about as well, and, you know, thinking about the fact we took their land, well, I didn't, but previous did, and it just seems a simple, what's the cost of a test?
Independent, $1,200. Travel, truck, simple.
What do you mean? You mean if they decide...
If I just say, "Hey, you guys, I want you here ASAP," just that one sample.
What if it's done when you're flagging?
If I do it as a group coordination, it'd be about 575.
Okay, so it's less...
And when will I do it again? And when will I do it again?
I have some guys coming probably early February. I have a gets event coming up. I may have somebody here this week, but between now and February.
So the biggest concern is alerting neighbors to potentially testing wells, which causes overreaction potentially from the neighbors? Is that what your concern is?
Well, no, I, I don't have a, I don't have a concern. Like I said, I, if you guys want to test, I can test it. Now, as you test, you know, DEQ will, you know, they'll, they see you going more and more. They'll have you do more and more and then you'll put that on annual.
So you open pay doors box.
But you can ask to do another one and if they, if DEQ asks, you're solving a, solving a problem with a client. You're not, you're not actually testing more.
I've talked, you know, when, when Mr. Ori called me and said, hey, you know, what can you do here? And I said, okay, if, if your water came back good, what is your expectation? He said, I'm good for every couple of years. He said, I don't want it every three, six months. He said, I'm not trying to, to be, you know, hard-headed about this. He said, but I'd like it tested to know where my baseline is. And then he said, and I'm fine to do it, you know, he said. So I, I just can't see where that's an unrealistic thing. And, and with the history of the fact that you got, that the land was basically taken out from under them. It just to me is a goodwill offering. And if it can be done with a group for cheaper, I'm all for being economical.
I mean, I can test.
Anything.
Yeah, I mean.
So do you do the one before it? There's one.
Yeah, if not, we'll be back in a few months.
Right. And I, you know, Laura's, when was Laura's checked? Couple of years ago, so.
They'll, they'll be coming up. Yeah, we'll be coming up.
I mean, if they're coming up and we add one more to it just because of customer satisfaction.
But like you, you've got one before we haven't tested, you have one right after you haven't tested. Do you get those three there in line, right?
In real, real world, and, and like Mike said, public health is our number one problem, period, period. But if we start monitoring, like you said, Ori said he'd be comfortable every couple of years. If we start monitoring it, then it's going to likely become a requirement of DEQ moving forward. And maybe that's okay, okay. But one thing that will happen, and it's part of living in small town America. And, and some of this came up a couple of years ago when we started doing some of these other testing. Uh, for the very same reason, it was the right thing to do, although not mandated or requiring. Some of the neighbors that wasn't immediately adjacent.
They want to test.
Caught wind, well, there must be something wrong. Is there something wrong? Can you test mine? So just be prepared, if we add one, two, three more on Tree Farm Lane that aren't immediately adjacent to the closed landfill and aren't mandated by DEQ, then some of that scuttlebutt will expand even further and you may end up getting.
I understand that, but.
Just, just being doubles that.
Very much aware of that, very much aware of that, but.
Is there budget for that? I mean, is there budget to do an extra couple of wells if we need it done or would like to have it done?
Yeah, I mean, each year I'll have, I'll work with engineers on the budget, what we project to do, what we'll, we'll need to do. Like we'll, you know, we're looking at, um, you know, probably at the Lockhart residence. You know, we're going to need to drill a new deep well. We're going to have to do a relocation and then we'll probably have to use another well as a module. So, you know, we work through those things with DEQ. It's a process. You have to get, you know, all your plans in place and then each year I'll plan for a budget. Budgetarily, yes, I can, I can handle. I'm not worried about, you know, six hundred or twelve hundred.
I mean, can you handle that now? Because we're looking to get that done in February when the next cycle comes up. We should throw them in and, and just make them part of it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be okay.
That's up to the, that's up to the board to do.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean.
I think it's the right thing to do.
Is there any program or any assistance through DEQ to help offset these, these, or anything even with the EPA? That works hand in hand with landfill?
Yeah, I mean, we're not a super fun site or something like that. So, you know, I mean, I don't think there's, I mean, I'm not going to say there's nothing, but I don't know anything available.
That was kind of the preemptive report. The easement was, we're worried, you know, maybe they do two or three more lots across the street. Just like up here on the right, you've got some undeveloped, you've got four undeveloped lots sitting right here.
Right.
Groundwater, like Mike said, near surface water, water flowing this direction. This is the mainstream or it's flowing back over the other side heading in this direction. But, yeah, you always worry. We want to make sure four, three or four more houses didn't pop up across the street. Because then you get into the county buying the houses or providing water systems for those properties at some point in time. But certainly, the stream divides here, water should be going down to the stream. So hopefully we're okay in this direction. We didn't know if this line would be up here. But again, as Mike said, they, the hydrologists and geologists went in there and looked at it and then doubled it to give us kind of what we thought was maximum exposure. At some point, the landfill should start turning the corner and the amount of contamination should start decreasing because it's been inactive for so long, but period of time.
Most landfills, most landfills is called Monitor Natural Attenuation.
Did the earth think that we experienced, uh, the earth should have any impact?
If you don't, if we didn't have the public drinking sources, it wouldn't be a big concern. Because, you know, it would be easier to keep a property. We're not worried about, you know, okay, there's no public well. We're not seeing groundwater protection standards. You know, but with a well there, if there's a detection, you know, if there's a trace, then we, we, we're mandated.
How do we, how do we get this done?
I think we can take consensus of the board. If the consensus of the board is to either this one well or those three wells back there, whatever. I would just say if we jump and test the one in the middle, as Bob said.
We're not testing.
You'll be back in a month or two. Because there's a house between it and the one in front and there's one immediately, go back Mike, one immediately behind it. So you've got those three.
Yeah, well Laura's is the, the first one behind Lockhart's house. And you said you've already tested that.
Yep.
And then the, the middle house.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That middle house was the house, that was Linda's mom's house. So I think maybe Jeremy's living in there now, Donny's son is what he told me. And then that next house is Donny and Diana's.
Yes.
So if Laura's house has already been tested, I would, I mean, I can't speak for them and that's up to them. But I can find that out if he's comfortable with his well is tested and two wells and they're all. And I don't even know, is there a third, is there a third well or did they connect up to save?
You mean through the same well or something?
I think they had the same well.
Well, no, you use one well for two houses. Because I'm, I'm thinking that close together to be conservative, they might've hooked on.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent. I know there's two, I know. And one of the things, just to, originally we were going to buy these two houses. And then ultimately what we did was we drilled a well for this one outside of the easement area.
But didn't you buy Joey's house and sold it back?
Well, we bought the, bought, the easement is, is a property in total between Lorraine and, I, I don't have the exact. Originally we were going to buy the house and land straight out and the county would own it. And at the end of the day, they wanted to keep it. So we had to negotiate the value. The value of the easement included.
Because there's ransom's plan to build it right here.
Correct.
And drunk the well.
And I'm surprised at the lots on the side because I would've thought that was a flood disch.
Over here?
Yeah, I would've thought if they were building it, it had gone back to hay field, but, yeah, but that's none of my business.
Before the easement as well, we did put filtration systems on both homes.
Right.
And there's been no contamination after filtration.
Right.
So, I mean, we know that's working and, and that's something that we paid for.
Mike, what about the three that are back off of that tree farm, toward Tree Farm Lane? The stars that are those, have those been found to be contaminated?
No.
Nothing there?
Then show me 233 again.
Right behind it.
There. No, I, I, I just can't see spending five hundred bucks or whatever it is to get it done. Just do it, make a map. I mean, Tony, do you have an opinion?
What are you proposing to do, just the one or just the three?
Just the one.
One's already been done. Out of the three, one's already been done. The middle house, I can check with, if I could go down and ask.
So they're saying the middle house is Ori's house. Is that not correct?
The first house is his sister-in-law's. The second house they built for his grandmother-in-law. She passed away. I think his son's living there now. The third house is Diana and Donny's. I'm not sure when they built them because the houses are all really close.
So which one are we testing?
Third one, Donny's.
All the way up?
Of the, the last one. And I, what my, I don't know, and I don't know, did you dig any wells out there? They may have, if it was a well that could, they could hook on to, to provide two houses. I don't know. I didn't think to ask them that, so I don't know. But, so if it is, then there's only two wells and one's already been tested.
So only needed us.
Right.
So what are you proposing to as far as, one has been tested. Is that on the schedule? It gets tested every two years? So we have those other two, they would be on the schedule too?
Yeah.
And it's every two years?
The, currently.
Current.
And now if something would happen and all the professional advice is wrong and then something.
Do it more frequently.
Yeah, you would automatically go and then if there was any kind of contamination detected, then you would automatically have to step up into, you know, hey, we need treatment, we need new wells, whatever it may be.
And I'll, I'll ask you, your, this is your level of expertise here. Fracking's not allowed, right? I know some well drillers used to do where they blew the air down or whatever it was that they did.
Never heard of fracking in this area.
In this area, okay. The other question is when people drill wells, because I know with our well at our house, we didn't have any iron at our house and then our neighbor dug a well and bam, the streams crossed and we got iron all of a sudden. So when people dig wells, that can change flows, correct?
Oh, yeah. That's another reason that we wanted an easement because.
Didn't want anybody else drilling.
Yeah, you start drilling and that's what we're doing with stuff. We're trying to, we're trying to drill intentionally.
Right.
Yeah, to keep that water back.
Not knowing, it's just, to me, it's just peace of mind and I think, I think it's just something we have to do.
About two as far as one well's only seventy feet deep and you're not to drill.
The Lockhart well, there, it's, that's the well that we have had, we have detected volatiles in. We put on a water treatment system that takes everything out. But MW nine, you know, you start, you have elevation, you, you see, we hadn't exceeded groundwater protective standards on our side when that happened. Their well follows suit with ours. So now we go above groundwater protective standards are here, then we have immediate concern and the state already starts communication, hey, we need to come up with a plan. We're either going to move that extraction and treatment system further down the line and pump more water, which would probably, you know, probably be several hundred thousand dollars. Or, you know, let's, let's look at, you know, what's happening naturally, you know, like we did with Miss Smelster. You know, and then the potential would be, let's drill a new well. If we have a clean location behind the Lockhart house and then we would use that monitoring that old well, that shallow well, it's basically going to be right in line with our problem as a monitoring point.
So again, you got the one and the one behind it and, and we don't know exactly how the hydrology would work.
Right, but I'm going to be drilling well in theory soon.
Would it be less likely that the one behind it would be contaminated without the one in the front contaminated?
Yes.
So, okay, so, okay, so if the front one was contaminated, the back one wouldn't necessarily be. But the back one could be contaminated and the front one wouldn't necessarily be contaminated. It could work out that way.
You lost me.
You got the one in the back.
Let me get this back up.
Well, no, you, you got the, you got the three. You got the one right in the middle.
So the front, is that Bentonville Road or is that front? Okay, Lockhart.
So I'm saying is, would it be less likely, if the front one on Bentonville Road was not contaminated, would the one in the back be contaminated, could be contaminated?
The one on the road is.
Less likely.
Most likely.
Less likely for the back one.
Less likely to do it. The plume is going this way, so Sheri's would be the most predictable, the most likely to see something, but.
I'm okay doing two, both of them. The only thing is, and then, then leave it up to Cheryl to some extent. You know, contact the other people if they start getting wind of it, like you said. And that they're, you know, where their testing errors and put that information out there, I think and let them know and say, you know, this is.
Well, it's the adjacent property owners all get the sheet. Anyone to home tested immediately gets lab toy.
Right, right.
And the good thing is, that pretty much covers, because you've got one more house way back here and I think it's in the process of being sold. And then you've got Michelle that's, and that's Michelle's house, isn't it? So you're testing that?
No, we just did that as part of the easement area. We did one test on it.
Is that okay?
But her well got tested then, it's got to start.
Yeah.
So you're way behind his house.
You okay with the two?
So, yeah, that's a no brainer. I'm sorry, we just got to do it.
You okay with the two?
Yep. Okay.
Yep.
So we'll report back at some point once we get the test results back after this time.
All right. Well, I appreciate it and I appreciate all your time and.
How does that get done now?
Mike takes care of it.
Yeah, okay.
The dollar value, it doesn't require the board action, so we could, I think it's just, we got the consensus of the board.
And it's beneath the value.
Well, and he's kind of told you that he's got money and a bunch of this.
This helps me a lot. A very good presentation of understanding.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you so much.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And we just talked briefly about water. There's gas, there's other issues, some are permanent. Proceed in budget season, you'll, you'll see why, why our budget follow up.
I know, and just asking since we're sitting here.
Just one thing off subject a little bit. When we have the outside agencies' work session, it's like the twenty-ninth or something, no, twenty-eighth?
Thank God, I have the list in form. I know the eleventh is the county.
When do you expect us to get the, the three ring bonder? A week before?
At least when, like, whenever I get to.
Just so people have a chance to review, because we usually have fifteen or sixteen people that speak that night and we try to limit it to ten minutes because you'll have all the background information. And in order to get everybody through in three hours, we try to limit that. But then if there's additional questions as far as follow-up, that's when you write it down, when it brings back, if you need to be.
We're talking about budgets.
I'm talking about, yes, I, I said the outside agencies.
Okay, that, that's fine.
Just try to keep them, you know.
We, we got a list of the outside agencies in the orientation package. Me, I have that.
Not all of them show up that night.
Charles, shut up and listen and don't ask you questions.
They don't all show up? And do we have a historical allocation of what?
You have at least last quite two years.
Two years, that's what I'm looking for. Okay, that's good. So I can understand whether we've gone up, gone down, what's the, yeah.
We must stay the same.
Yeah.
A lot of it flat for a while.
Have they? Yeah. We're probably going to be flat.
Is that it?
No, I won't check.
Is that it? Are we adjourned?
Yes, sir.
Yep, done. I'm stoked.